Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us this evening. Today, we are hosting this town hall for a very important purpose, and that is to hear from the community as well as our parents and educators about the things that they prioritize within their schools that are essential for us to keep in mind as we think about the capital and local budget. As you know, the budget process is a very complicated process because we have limited resources and many things that we want to do. So as we think about the budget, we have to think about what are the key things that we want to prioritize in alignment to the strategic plan, the goals and priorities that we've set through the plan. This evening, our hope is that through conversations, we will be able to gather feedback from you about the things that you think are critical for us to keep at the top of mind as we plan the draft, the proposed budget to the board this upcoming December. And we're hoping that the feedback that you provide us will give us some critical insight in terms of the things that the community at large sees as essential for us to keep in mind as we plan the budget forward. So I'm going to turn it now over to Mr. Azmani, who will be presenting some key elements of the budget process, but most importantly, where we are in terms of our thinking and some of the things that we keep in mind as we look at the budget and prioritize capital and local, as well as some insight in terms of grants and how our grant efforts help us bring in additional resources that otherwise we would not be able to have to help facilitate the work we have to do within our schools. The board and I are going to move down to the audience just to allow for this portion of the presentation.
I'm just gonna ask those of you that are here to help us with taking note taking, you are going to want to go home. We don't have any guarantee when we need to work facility or taking. To be respectful of your time, thank you. And you can go home before I start responding to the competition. Don't be shy. Welcome to the safe.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out on this rather chilly evening. It's been a beautiful four. We always get excited with the budget process. Every year, we go through this process. This year, we did something different from prior years. One of the things we did last year, you parents and our advocates, have always been very active in showing up at meetings and advocating for the resources that we should need. And so what we wanted to do this year is to engage with you closer to the beginning of the process rather than engaging after the board event is approved of the budget. And so what I'd like to do is kind of walk through the budget process, give you a bit of an overview, and then, as was mentioned, break up in groups and talk about the process. So my name is Una Azmani. I am the Board of Event Chief Financial Officer. I do have two of my team members here. So Re Walker is here and Kristen is here somewhere. Actually, it's like Kristen is here and we have others on the team that we work together actively to build the budget. So briefly, I just kind of want to talk about the budget process from the board event side, how we begin the process, and then how the board budget integrate with the city budget process. So typically, we start in October by looking at the numbers, looking at the prior year ending, and we develop what's called a performer budget. Once we have the performer budget together, then we start engaging our central office departments, our curriculum departments, our information technology department, and then we start making some assumptions of what we think is going to be needed next year. We look at our staffing levels. We look at our existing contracts, what those contracts call for us to do that follow years. So we have some basic information that we already know that needs to be incorporated in the budget. So we start putting that together. And then we work with our, with our departments and cabinet members and other leaders within the district to put together the initial budget requests. After those budget requests are done, and this is where we are now in the month of November, we receive all of those requests, and then we sit down with the superintendent and put together the superintendent's recommended budget, looking at the contracts called for, looking at what is needed, grand dollars, what's inspiring, what are some new revenue sources. We start talking about initiatives that we get into that the superintendent and the team would like to see moving forward. This year is part of this process. This meeting that we're having now is between step two and three. So that is a box that did not exist prior to this year. And so this is also an opportunity for you to inform what goes in the superintendent's recommended budget. After the superintendent makes a recommended budget in December or January, we then engage, and we are engaging the board throughout this process, but around December and January, then the board, based on feedback that they're hearing, approves a tentative approved budget, and that is a budget that is then submitted to the city. At that point, the DOE budget, in combination with all of the other city departments' budget, fire, police, are then reviewed through the city budget process through the month of January again. There are a series of public hearings. We meet with the county council. We meet with the investment and taxation. We meet with the planning and zoning. There are a number of bodies elected on the city and appointed on the city side that engage in this budget process. In around February or March, the mayor makes a tentative recommendation. And at that point, we have a better understanding of what the city is able to fund, not just in the district, but for all the departments in Y. And then we engage in a process with our schools in what we call the student-based budget. And this is something that we do to make sure that the resources are evenly provided to all the students, taking into account the various needs of the students. We have students that have different learning needs. Throughout the budget process, we have facilities needs that need to be incorporated into that. So based on that student-based budget, we spent almost a whole month working with principals. This is Carla here, and this is Dr. Moore here. I saw Yessenia here. So we engage with all of our principals and their respective SGCs to develop a budget within some constraints, right? Because at this point, we don't have unlimited resources. Our resources are finite. And so within those confines, we put together a student-based budget. And around May, we get a final number from the city that this is your budget not to exceed. And so then we go through a process of reconciling. So we have to reconcile what the city is able to fund for the board event versus what we at the board event need. And so we have some difficult conversations, some tough conversations, but they have to happen because legally, we cannot approve, the board cannot approve budget more than what the city is willing and the board has spent. And so during the month of June, we develop, we approve the budget, and then that becomes a budget that goes into the federal line. And then on July 2nd, the finance team starts this process all over again. So this is kind of the budget process on the cycle. Our budget is guided by a more improved strategic plan and strategic priorities. So all of the initiatives that we include in the budget are guided by that plan. And so we don't just create initiative that do unalign with the strategic priorities. And so these are the five strategic priorities that the board has approved in the five-year plan. Excellence, engagement, future readiness, equity, high-quality instruction support. As you can see, all of these relate to how we want our students, our children to be prepared in the community once they exit the system. And so that is the intent of this process. Within these five strategic priorities, we have also, the board has also approved six strategic goals that align our budget. So one, we want to strengthen individualized student success programs. Because as I said earlier, each student has different needs. You have IP programs and revenue sciences programs and pathways and all of that. So our goal is to make sure that we have a budget that is consistent with the goals that are aligned with the strategic plan and the strategic initiatives. We also want to do it in a way that's efficient. And so business operations department with finance, we have, we have as a goal to develop a facilities program. This, this is an example. We have to have environments that are safe and convenient for learning for students and for those that provide instruction to our students. And so we have as part of our goal to make sure that we have a systematic role in how we develop our facilities. Within the HR department, which includes HR, finance, and business operations, which supports all of our educators in the system, we also have to have systems that are evaluated, streamlined, and they're consistent with best practices. That we, we are highly regulated. Business, industry, and therefore, we need to make sure that in everything we do, we do it in accordance with best practices following state laws and mandates. We also, one of our goals is to make sure that we cultivate instructional leadership in our school buildings. Because the only way that we can effectively educate or teach our students is to have our leaders provide instruction to be equipped to provide that instruction in a manner that's consistent with the goal of having our children enter our system prepared for the future. Number five, develop and refine our programming options to increase opportunities for students and to ensure students have access to high-quality instruction and support. As you know, the education area is one that evolves. We've all been learning about ChatGPT and all these AI tools. And so we have to constantly adapt to the environment outside. Our environment is not stagnant. And then finally, number six, we want to ensure that in addition to students and faculty, families are a huge part of the system. And so part of our strategic goal is to also ensure that families that support our children are providing equitable opportunity to access the vast array of resources that this place has. So when we put the budget together, we put it in these six goals in mind. We align to the strategic priorities of the districts that have been approved by the board, but were built with input from the community. Because every year, we do a strategic plan. It's not a central office-driven or staff-driven or a principal-driven process. It is a community-involved process. So I'm going to talk about the capital budget, then I'll go into the operating budget. Each year, we have capital costs. These are needs that are related to our facilities. We include suspensions like technology. Our buildings need air conditioning to be repaired. We have, I heard today, a parking lot at Ryan McMahon, parking lot at North High. We have a number of capital projects, school construction projects are going on. So this is just, this is a two-page slide. This is page one of two. Looking at what the council has approved in terms of capital requests for the district. So this year, beginning, we started this in August. This is not a final list yet, but the green column shows what we currently have as requests. The departments will review this. They will, they will sort of these things down. We are anticipating some grants that could possibly offset these needs. But we begin the process by highlighting what we feel the needs are for the current year. So this is not a final document. The board event will approve a final capital budget. Then we then go to the city. But this is the phase that this request is in right now. So you can see on here, and then the handout that we have. And then the second page, we see that we have things here that did not exist before, but they do exist now. You see, I think we have, we heard a lot on the need for oil for lockers in the middle schools. And so we have those things that are also included, laptops for children, networking equipment, and so forth. As you can see, just for this year alone, right now, we're at fourteen point six million. We know that we cannot send to the city fourteen point six million dollar request. Even if we did, we would not get funded at the fourteen point six million dollar rate. So because this is combined with all the requests on the city side. The police vehicles, fire trucks, bridges need to get built. So all of our requests are combined with all of these other requests in terms of the total citywide request. And so here, I'm going to ask our assistant superintendent of business operations to share some light into how we, particularly with facilities, how we prioritize facilities, how project get on this list, how project get moved from this list, and then maybe he can share that with everybody.
Thanks, Una. So again, my name is Sandra Fejela, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations. And the reason, we're being very strategic as to why I'm the one that's telling you about priorities. Because a lot of the stuff that hits social media has to do with facilities and why some things get repaired at some schools and people get repaired at other schools. So it's a pretty hot topic, and it's one that actually has gained a lot of traction with our current mayor. Because prior to this mayor, a lot of that maintenance and repair had been sort of deferred and kept getting deferred. But a lot of investment has actually been made in our schools lately. And so then I will fill you in on how that process actually comes to play. So one of the things that we do is there's money that we request, as you saw in the previous slide, that is just generally for maintenance and repairs. So there's two different types. There's corrective maintenance, which is obviously if something breaks down, we end up having to fix it. And then there's also just preventative maintenance. So preventative maintenance has the best laid-out plans as to like what we would like to do. Our corrective maintenance actually meets up most of that budget request that we made. I'll give you an example. One example is our Ryan McMahon H-Box system is failing. When they built Ryan McMahon or renovated it, they didn't have no redundancy. So when the system fails, there's no air at Ryan McMahon. To repair that system costs nine million dollars. So you can just imagine the expense that goes into that sort of request. That would be corrective. When we, when it did fail, it failed at their graduation. University Mayor Alex was there, and she said, "It's really hot here. Can you find out what's happening?" The system had failed. When we repaired it and we had to put it in a rental, those all also come out of that budget. And so those are some of the corrective things that we end up using that we pay them for that we request every year. In addition to that, there's just other pieces that go into that. So there are things that we have to put in just to maintain being able to inhibit or to be habitable, like trash maintenance, screens, windows, all those different things. So a lot of times, by the time it comes to the cosmetic things, which are usually the things that you see when you first enter a building, those things start to just like further and further down the priority list. We have made some investments more recently with like landscaping and starting a painting program for schools so that we can actually be paying attention to that. But something like a broken tile is not going to take priority over something like a broken air conditioner. And so then some of those choices are the choices that we make when we actually start to put together this list. Things that are on this list, like oh, year after year, have to do with what we're legally mandated to do. So the state does have an asbestos program. That asbestos program, we have outlined for the number of schools that we have. If we do one or two, or one school took us two years because you actually have to do it over the summer. There's all these restrictions that you have. Other ones are removing old oil tanks, storage tanks from the ground. Those are things that you will see that we request money for every year. And those are because they are state mandated items that we have to do in order for us to maintain ground, making sure that we're treating where the oil tanks fall and make those contaminants that are found. Then we end up having to manage those also. So that's just a glimpse in how the priorities get brought up. As you will see, we have some things that end up making the list. So the replacement of people's school lockers, some people may say that that is not a critical maintenance. But for us, at this point, the lockers are at the end of their useful life. They're actually sharp. They don't lock. The students think it's critical. And the parents have actually really raised concern about the middle school lockers and the conditions. So that ended up elevating itself as to something that we're saying to the city and to our community, "It's time for us to start to address that." And then we made a plan to address it hopefully next several years according to the number of schools that we have. So that's one of those things that are one-off that may look like it's cosmetic, but at this point have become critical because of the disrepair.
Thank you. So this is the capital budget side of the equation. And it has different funding sources, different revenue stream. And most of this money, this money that the city borrows through bond offerings, and this is how these projects are paid. So they're separate from the tax dollars that we talk about on the operating budget. So coming to the operating budget, we have three, I call the three major buckets that fund our schools. And so this is looking at the current year we're in. Our total resources for the year to operate the schools from all of these buckets is two hundred and sixty-seven million. So I like to say that North Public Schools is a corporate business. If this was a corporate business, we're actually a large business. And so on a daily basis, this is the volume of funds that we are responsible for within the district and money takes to run this business, I think, here at June. The three major buckets are the general fund, which is the fund that is provided to us by tax dollars from the season. That makes up about eighty-five percent of all of your budget. Grants currently make up twelve percent. This number used to be higher during COVID. We received a lot of federal dollars during that period, the two, three-year period. And I think you heard this last year, when we talked about those COVID funds expiring, we had to make way and to how we continue to provide much-needed services that did not go away. Yes, because those dollars went away. So that still is a rather challenging year. So currently, we're at about twelve percent during COVID. That pie keeps us as high as twenty percent. And then we also have a school lunch fund, which manages our school lunch program. These are dollars we receive through the federal government via the state. In the past, we also used to charge some fees, particularly lunches. We've kind of reversed that policy and to provide free lunches to all of our students, but there is a cost associated with that. For a number of years during COVID, we received federal dollars that provided full funding for this. However, our school lunch fund does not pay for itself. So we are looking now at, and we've always done this in the past, with exception of the last two, three years, where the general fund subsidizing the school lunch fund, that seven point two million dollars, about a million dollars of that is funded through the general fund. We only generate through grants, and it's only about sixty million dollars. So that fund is always short. And we included a general fund budget funding for that. So looking at this big piece, this eighty-five percent of the budget, this is kind of high, like salaries and benefits, technical services, and so forth. But another way to look at this is by way of a pie chart. And this is why I always like to show that we are a people business. Eighty-three percent of all of our budget is salaries and benefits. All of those other pieces, as Sandra talked about, some of the operating pieces of the budget, other services, supplies and materials, that's like paper and all the things that we need to fund the schools. But a big chunk of our budget is salaries and benefits, which is about eighty-three, eighty-three percent of our budget. So you ask, where does this eighty-three percent of the budget get spent? This was a snapshot picture that we took. And it's not going to vary much year to year. But this is where our people are within the district. Eight hundred and fifty-two on the data we took this are in elementary schools. This includes all the teachers, principals, high schools. I count to about five hundred and nineteen. Middle schools about three hundred and thirty-four. So if you look at those first two bar, elementary, high school, and middle, almost ninety percent of our salaries and benefits expenses go directly towards school services. They are funding people in our schools. And that is where these people live and work on a daily basis. We have some district-wide employees, and these are people that provide support to the school. So for example, the math program has in math, eh? English-language arts has an English, has an English-language art, eh? And therefore, although they are not stationed in the schools or stationed centrally because they oversee or within the district, they're included in the one to one. So if you add those individuals with all the schools that provide direct services, you see that close to ninety-four percent of our work is directly to support the students. And then obviously, just like any organization, we need to support teachers and their families. So we have finance, curriculum operations, IT and superintendent. And so that makes up about five to four percent of the overall budget. So this kind of tells me where the people are and where that eighty-four percent of our budget is spent. Yes? Yeah, well, yes, please.
We discussed this.
We did, nothing. I lost the log. You got it all.
Do you want to go back to the project?
Yes.
I was gonna Kanye West him, and he decided to take it. But I decided not to. So, so the reason why we bring this up is because that twelve percent fluctuates. And I just want you guys to understand that the life of grants is a life that's ever-changing because grants are competitive. So we do have some grants that we're entitled to. They're, and our grants person actually is sitting here. Carol, Carol also throws out some grants for us. But so then, the life of grants is ever-changing. So that twelve percent is twelve percent this year. It may be less a different year just depending on what the grants are out there that we can actually pursue. So more recently, we were in the paper because we were awarded a fifty-million-dollar grant. And in that fifty-million-dollar grant, it's over the life of five years over three schools. But it's for very, very specific things. So grants come with it, many strings attached. And so it doesn't mean that all of a sudden we have another three million dollars this year that we can spread across the needs of the schools. It actually is very intentional. So the latest one was around magnet assistance, magnet school assistance program. And then it comes with it all of the different things that we have to do for that grant and all of the different people that we have to put in place. But then at the end of that five years, you're expected to have that join our operating budget. So there are some things that we have to do to make sure that then if those programs are being built out with the grant, that we then assume in the operating budget. So it's sort of a catch-22. The good thing is, is that it helps to alleviate the pressure of the budget ask because it's a significant number. But the bad thing is, is that you can't just use it any old way. You actually have to use it according to the grant and the way that the grant is written. So something to think about when you look at that twelve percent.
I don't have my cellphone on me, but I feel the superintendent is expecting me. I could upload them. I know her. So I'm gonna briefly talk about key achievements. So as Sandra mentioned, this past year, we applied for the fifty-million, highly, highly competitive grant. And we were fortunate to have received it. So I'm not going to take company more. We received almost a million dollars in capital investments through the city capital project. We were able to install sixty-five cameras, providing eighty-six additional views in our facilities. We installed over a hundred and eighty door locks. And we added provision of fencing and marvin and solar school. We were able to implement a twilight program. Our twilight program, the future rating program, is a program that offers the ability for our students who are not able to repeat their studies within the traditional setting. but gives them opportunity to continue studying and earn their degrees. We were able to hire literacy and math coaches. Again, this is by for strategic plan. And in the spring 2023, we observed almost 23 TKT meetings across the district, which was, we were very excited about that. And then finally, I'm just gonna talk about, the state produces student achievement data. And so we compare with Norwalk other schools compares with other city schools within the district because city schools are different than town schools and non-town schools. We have a different makeup of our students, we have different student needs. And so as you can see, in English language arts for 2023, Norwalk was top of all of the city schools that we've been established in. In terms of math, we were also top of all of the city schools. And I highlighted, I voted Norwalk. And in 2023, we also ranked top in our science performance. So you can see that as a district, we are doing well relative to other town. Are we where we need to be, you know, to work? But relative to our peers, we are moving where we should be moving towards. And then the same thing in English language arts and math. Again, we ran top of all of our peer city schools within the state of the nation. Looking at FY25, and I believe this is my last slide. Obviously, we have had conversations with teachers and media media associates. One of the things that we're looking to do this year is to budget for increased planning time for our teachers. One of the things you've heard is that four planning periods are not enough. And so we're looking to increase that to possibly five. In order to achieve that, obviously, when they are planning, you have to have people that are in the classroom to educate the children. So this is going to have a budget impact this year. We're kind of still working with the numbers, and we have some folks that are really working with us. But the superintendent's goal is in FY25 is to include this as part of the budget. Last year, we had some one-time funding that we received to balance our budget. The mayor gave $2.5 million from federal dollars. We had some reserves. Those were all one-time fixed. Those have gone away. So this year, we have to determine how we incorporate that in the budget. And then special education continues to be an area where not only are we seeing additional needs, but the rate for services that we outsourced has been increased. And so that is something that we're constantly watching and we're watching. With that, I will turn over to Ms. Rosami.
Very efficient, Ms. Rosami. So this gives you a perspective of where we are in terms of our thinking around the capital as well as the local budget. For us today, most importantly, we want to have an opportunity to learn from you. What are some of the things that are on top of mind for you as we venture into this new budget cycle? So with us today, we have Dr. Richard Lemmons, who's going to be facilitating the conversation this evening. I'm gonna ask for the central office team to take some of the tables in the back. And if we can have the school parents, school community members to take maybe the first few tables here. Principals, you can stay with the other groups. We can just swap.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Richard Lemmons. Please call me Richard. I'm delighted to be here with you. I am a huge fan of this district. And it had the opportunity to work with the district in a variety of ways over the last several years. You are the superstars on now the coldest day so far this winter. With wind biting through, I didn't wear thermals, I was just biting through my pants, walking through. You still weathered the storm, came out to be a part of this conversation. We would appreciate you for that. We didn't exactly know how many to expect. So we're just appreciative of you, Richard. We're appreciative that you're gonna be a part of this conversation. This conversation is really about all of you. And notice that we have a whole lot of other people here. We're gonna try to keep this conversation kind of among parents in the community, poor parents in the community, and I'll try to manage that process. We're really just looking to get your insights. The district just shared their priorities going through and the process and how the categories of spending look like. But we're really interested in hearing your feedback. So we had some conversations that we're hoping to share and some questions to pose to you. And we're gonna try to capture some notes over the course of the next hour and 20 minutes. We're appreciative that you'll be a part of this. So we're gonna ask that the board members distribute themselves across these tables to listen in. Now, it's really clear, they're not active participants, they're active listeners. You're the ones who are the heavy lifting here. But they're very passionate as board members of understanding your voice, understanding your perspectives, understanding your priorities in the budgeting process. You might have a real desire through the next hour, 15 minutes, to occasionally turn to the board and then look to your left or to your right. So tell me about this. And I'm gonna discourage you from doing that because if you put the board members on the spot and make the conversation about your board tonight, we won't hear your perspectives. We'll just hear the board's perspectives. We really wanna hear your perspectives. That's what we're trying to do. You will see the board members and maybe one or two other members of the staff taking notes. Yes, they're taking notes about what you're saying because we're really interested in capturing it. We're gonna ask you at certain parts of the conversation to capture some of your notes on easel paper. But you might see some people taking notes just because we wanna, we're gonna sit around and be great. So we're gonna be here and now gonna inform the process. So that's, that's all that that is about. So I just wanna do a check. So everybody in these groups right here, other than the board members, are family members, community members here, not primarily staff members. You might be staff members who are really here as a community parent or member of the SGC, correct? And is that the same for this table too? We still have only a couple of people. Get some more bodies over to this table or bring some bodies over here. Take four or five in a conversation will be over, Richard, the conversation. We'll, there might be a little bit of shit. So first order of business, we want you to introduce yourselves to the people you're gonna be conversing with for the next hour and 20 minutes. And we're interested in your reactions to Ms. Rosami's presentation. What did you hear? What did you see? So we're gonna, and as you see, we're gonna start bringing over some easel paper with markers in the boxes. We're gonna ask you, after you do your introductions, create a T-table on an easel sheet or paper. To the left, what did you hear? What did you notice? What stood out to you in the presentation? On the right, what are your wonders? What are you wondering about after you've heard all of that? This capital budget, I don't really have a question about how that operates in relationship to the regular budgets. Any questions on the right side? Any noticing, anything you heard, anything stood out to me on the left-hand side? And that's just to get your conversation going and to give you an opportunity to process all that information and all those slides that were thrown at you in that presentation. Any questions I could answer about part one of this, of our conversation tonight? Introductions, and then conversing about the presentation you just heard. Are we just gonna do a group of three right here or do a two with listening? Do we have anybody who is not kind of here with other people and would be willing to go to another table? It takes more talk time. Okay? Would you like to come join? They're wanting you to come join. They're begging you to come join. They're opening up seats. I'm gonna start the timer. You've got 10 minutes, quick introductions, and then quick reactions. And the easel papers will be coming over. We're asking somebody to help capture that. And anybody who's still lingering around from the team, we have one person and each group. And you might even help capture some of the notes on the easel paper. Thank you.
Really explode.
You got the entire seven million there.
Yes.
Yeah. I just have to have somebody guide me because my laptop's over there. You know what I mean? I have nobody, like, somebody's gonna have to take me a little to the left, a little to the right, up down, blah, blah, blah.
I just got the shipping that arrived tomorrow between 10:30 and 2:30. And then down Sunday is five.